Okay, the time is nine oh one. I'm gonna call this B County Commissioners Court Notice Regular Term Meeting to order. Today is July thirteenth, Monday, twenty twenty. We're at the B County Courthouse Commissioners Courtroom Number One Ten. One oh five West Corpus Christi Street, Beeville, Texas, eight one oh two. If y'all would all please stand, join me in a short prayer. Dear God, please grant us guidance, wisdom, patience in deliberating and considering matters of importance to the functioning of the county. Please also keep in your care, keep safe, all B County citizens and citizens in Texas and the United States and across the world in the face of this unprecedented and new pandemic that doesn't seem to be going away. God's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Follow me, blessed legion. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our red flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, under God, one and indivisible.
Yeah, that sounded really good. Great. Another buddy. Thank you. Agenda item number four, recognize visitors. Looking in the, you see a couple of folks that might be visitors here. Do you have a list or anything, please?
Of what?
Of visitors.
Oh, there was one.
Any visitors here that want to identify themselves? No, no, yes, sir.
Carlisle Lottard with Lake City.
Hi, how are you, Mr. Lottard? Thank you for being here this morning. We're doing great, thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item number five. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Matt Exum was stuck here waiting.
Yeah, hey, Matt, how are you, sir?
Good, Harry.
Great, thank you for being here today. I'm sorry, Matt. Agenda item number five, Commissioners Court Opening Remarks. I don't remember where we went last time.
Doesn't matter, I'll start.
Okay.
Yeah, just a few things today. I wanna, I wanna make a super kudos to the Roden Bridge Department. I had a Ms. Campbell here last week, last meeting, talking about some drainage issues. Ray's crew has gone out to County Road six twenty-two, for those of you that don't know where that is, it's right behind the Papalote Fire Department. That road did dead end and a bunch of brush. We may be facing huge amounts of water moving here pretty quick. Ray was, his crew was instrumental in moving at least five, six, seven truckloads of brush, some old abandoned parts and things back in there. I even accused him of finding Jimmy Hoffa, his stage wagon that he was supposedly disappeared in, because they found the stage wagon part back there, too.
Oh, wow.
But it is, it's huge, it's opened up, water will be flowing great, he's still got a lot to do, but of course, his crew is stretched pretty thin, so. But again, fine work by them, you can actually see backup in there now, so hopefully that'll help some of their issues there. Also, one other thing, waiting on a little thing, had a talk with Rich Saunders, with the, with the wind farms, he was wanting some information he's gotten with Mr. Gonzalez on that stuff there, as far as the width of the road, who owns the road, and things like that, so. That should be forthcoming in the next meeting, we'll have some stuff on the agenda for that. Other than that, just simple calls and driving around looking at the county, that's it. Commissioner?
Pretty busy this past couple of weeks, we've got a couple of projects, little projects that we got completed. I know the sheriff, after Roden Bridge got their fence and gates put in to secure their yard, the sheriff was missing a gate to secure his evidence, so. Both of those are completed, they're done, if you haven't gone by them, go by and take a look. Ray, he did an awesome job with the using or scrounging for material to make that second fence, I don't know where it came from, but I think somebody wrote it on with him from TechStop. TechStop, it looks great, so, good job there. Derek Franco, thank you, sir, for getting the cars removed at the expo, it was looking pretty bad out there. Franco got those removed. The other, we had a salary study, couple meetings with a salary study, and we're gonna present that later on in court today, so. That's one, now we had a DVA meeting, and.
Thank you. So, yes, Commissioner Duett? Yes, there's a carve-out, when you do a speech, you can take the mask off. May I remove the mask for a few seconds? I can probably talk faster and get through quicker if I take it off. And I'll, I can, I'll be able to see, and I can hear.
That was the given point.
That was, we drink some water here.
Should've left the glasses on.
I have two things that I'd like to bring up this morning. One, I know that everybody knows it's hot outside in the afternoon. Take care of your critters. I took some cattle into sale last week, gotta work them early, it gets hot. But what I wanna bring up is, you have pets, you have horses, you have one thing or another, think about them. They need shade, they need water. On the way back to the ranch, you may or may not know what a Texas tardis is, they're a protected species in South Texas, they're endemic to, especially in Northern B County, there's some in South B County around Papalote. They're, when they're full grown, they're about the size of a grapefruit, they're kind of a gray screen with yellow squares on their back. They have to be seven years old before they can reproduce. Well, I removed two of those from the county road, then put them on the side, they went up in the deal, so. Be appreciative of the critters, they're having a hard time right now, too. The other thing I wanna bring up is why we live in B County and Beeville, Texas, and how much we need to appreciate it. And I wanna lead you through the back door, I was in HEB yesterday, and it involved four I know that I'm probably the only person in B County that has a hard time getting those little flat, plastic bags open. I, you know, so my wife loves peaches, we've been married fifty-three years this year, and she wants some peaches, so I go to HEB to get some peaches, and I pull the thing down, and I get it, I'm working on it, I'm working, I got my hat on, and I'm standing there, I'm working on it. Well, I did everything you can do, and I have the right side up where it says the areas say, "Open here," it won't open. And you've got on a mask, so you don't wanna get your lips and everything involved, so I put it down, and I pull another one off, and I'm working on it, and evidently, I got pretty antimated last night. I'm working on it, and I put it down, and I get four peaches, and I put them in the basket. Well, this lady walks up, and she said, "Sir, can I help you?" I said, "Yes, ma'am, you think you can?" She, "Oh, yeah, let me show you how to do that." So she takes one, very gently, "Here, put your peaches in here." Ma'am, I really do appreciate that. When I get ready to walk off, another lady walks up from over here, and she said, "Let me tell you my secret." "Yes, ma'am, what's your secret?" And I'm not a young spring chicken, and these ladies were, they had a few more years on me. She said, "I go over to the lettuce area where they have the little sprayers, and I get a little moisture on my hands, I take a bag over there and do that." So, what I'm leading up to, the kindness of people. Sometimes the little things make so much of a difference, and make you feel like, you know what? We're all in this thing together. And what I don't know is how many other people watching what I was doing, because these two ladies, one was over here and one was over here. And I probably worked on these plastic bags, because I was gonna get them for five minutes at least, and I finally pitched it down, you know, I did no verbiage involved or anything like that. But they were watching me, and I have to appreciate the kindness of people. And I wanna end this by saying, thank you Beeville, thank you B County, it's a pleasure to live here. Thank you. I'll pass.
I used that little sprayer myself. Go ahead. Okay, I had a meeting with the sheriff and some of the deputies, Mr. Franco was there, and he jumped in. With the residents of Salasal Heights and Blueberry Hill, it was a very productive meeting, I'm glad, Sheriff, that we had it. Generally, everyone came real, really happy that we met, okay? And I appreciate you guys long. Also, I met with Ray Gonzalez on some, they're not really issues, but some areas in Blueberry Hill, we had a little drive around, and I appreciate it, Ray, for going with me. I also spoke to Laura on the upcoming election, and also spoke to Mike Willow on the testing that's going on. I had myself tested a little back, and the results aren't in, but he indicated to me that this is a backlog, so many people can't test it, so. I understand, and I was just a messenger, Mike, on that one, from someone that was like, "Why haven't you got any results?" Call, call, I thought they're supposed to call me, but Mike is one too. But that's about it, just.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for outstanding God's attention.
Yeah, and I just, thinking back off of that, you and Mike Willow, and countless other individuals have been working tirelessly for the county now, going on well over a quarter. And there's really no end to it, so, thank you, thank you for continued dedication. And all the other departments that are, you know, are newly appointed, tax assessor-collector, you know, Michelle, we know you're doing your best in a very difficult situation, and we commend and applaud you. Same thing with the sheriff's office, and like I said, in all honesty, with all other departments. Ray, COVID is coming in and is impacting not only our private businesses, private individuals, but the functions of public government. So, as we try to navigate through this, I really do wanna commend and express my appreciation to everybody for continuing to show up and taking care of businesses. Do we have any, do we have any matters of public comment? Anybody that wants to speak this morning? Oh, do I need to speak up? I'm sorry. What I said before was. It was, I can't repeat it, but I can say that it was transformational. I think if you talk to any of the commissioners after this meeting, they'll say that they were moved by what I said.
I won't be able to sleep tonight.
I know.
I took some notes.
Take, I'll say, do we need to take five so we can all compose ourselves? I'm really sorry y'all meant that, that was good. No, thank you. Whenever I start thinking, it's always been a problem, whenever I start thinking, my voice drops, so you know when I'm thinking about what I'm saying, because I get quieter. With you all into my mind. Do we have any, do we have any individuals who'd like to provide public comments this morning? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Agenda item number seven, the following items are of an administrative nature, Commissioners Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a commissioner or county judge.
Move to approve, is presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Ms. Cantu?
Um, I had, I submitted the last two changes statuses for Julia Geary and Mike Willow. Those were for the purpose of the COVID, you know, pay, the COVID money, usage, the relief money, Julia Geary part-time and Mike Willow for his OT. I put on there to terminate twelve thirty-one, but it should be twelve thirty, so I would like to make that amendment. Right now, it is until twelve thirty, it could be extended, but right now, it's twelve thirty.
For the record, that's December thirtieth.
December thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Is there anything else? Does anybody else have any other? Commissioner Hager, would you please?
I'll amend my motion to add that to the amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, I'll second. Same, my second, so go on to.
Okay, we got it?
Got it.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen. Deliberate and consider action, I guess this really should be pronounced, deliberate and consider action on the following items, my apologies. Agenda item number eight, law enforcement support office, LESO, application for participation authorized screener's letter for the sheriff's office.
Derek Franco, patrol lieutenant with the sheriff's office. This is the yearly contract, the government gives the weapons to augment what we have to issue out to the deputies, and it's seen through the state, we're required to renew this yearly, and in this doing, and this year's changes, a new county judge, and we have a new address for the sheriff's office, so, that's the only difference on it.
Do we have the form already, is that something y'all prepared, or?
Uh, I gave.
Okay.
Yeah.
Move to approve. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you. Make sure we get that. Agenda item number nine, recommendation from the Policy Formulation Committee on Changes, Additions to the Following Section of the B County Policy Handbook, colon, section ten point oh four, on the job injuries. Mr. Will, are you presenting this morning? Thank you.
I'm listening, yes, sir.
Good morning.
Mike Willow, risk manager and virtue manager. This policy is revised specifically for individuals that are hurt, and might take longer than six months to recuperate. Our policies stand that six months, we would terminate an employee if they're on working leave for six months. What this policy does is allow the Commissioners Court to review the case, and if the case is legit, and I'm gonna say legitimate, because we've had cases in the past where people are on working leave count, and they were frauding the government to have a truth. And so this will allow the Commissioners Court to meet executive session, to talk, and give a month extension, should they want to do so, or should they not want to do so, based on the laws of the court. This falls into place with the other policy that we have, and I wish Himey was here because he.
Shut up.
Himey knows, you know, what other policy that it brings into, but it also falls in line with the six-month review, so it just meshes perfectly in with it, so.
Is there a recommendation from the policy?
The policy committee has sent a recommendation to the Commissioners Court for approval to add that one sentence, that after six months, that the Commissioners Court will review to see if we extend it at one month.
Interval.
Interval.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Thank you, Mike, for presenting this morning, thank you for the entire committee for putting this together. Hearing none, discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number ten, y'all are gonna have to walk me through this in case I make a misstep.
Number two, we have to wait till ten.
Yes, ten o'clock, it's about that.
We'll.
Okay.
Fix that one, then.
That was quick. Thank you, guys, very much. Now, remind me of ten, and we can slow down.
You guys should've talked longer.
We're gonna, I know. Moving on to agenda item number eleven, request to send a letter resolution to the Texas Department of Transportation, TechStop, to study and install signs restricting the use of truck engine brakes in precinct one and precinct four on Highway fifty-nine, Highway three fifty-one, and Highway two oh two in B County.
Yes, this is something myself, and Commissioner Hager spoke to Mr. Gonzalez about, and this is part of the procedure in order for this to happen, so I make a motion that we send the letter slash resolution to the Texas Department of Transportation.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, do we already have the draft of the letter resolution put together?
I believe you should have.
We have it, right?
Yeah, I have it.
Okay, thank you.
Is that something that Science Committee, your budget rate, or is that something that they provide for us, or?
This is totally us, and that Commissioner Hager, Grant Wright did this over years ago, it's outstanding.
And we just added a few extras, because I've been getting calls and talking to some residents around, and it, they strictly only handle the residential side, wherever there's a bunch of homes there, it's for that.
County what?
County what, yes.
Yes, sir. Do we know how many signs?
Two, four, six, eight, nine, nine, nine.
Any further discussion?
The only other thing is, it's just the five. The post, if I remember correctly, will be on the TechStop post.
If I have to hear it from them.
Yeah.
And we.
Okay, so if their post isn't a good location.
Yeah.
Great. All right, if there's nothing further, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number twelve, resolution requesting the Texas Department of Transportation to study and install signs restricting the use of truck engine brakes in precinct one.
Excellent. No, no.
That's also part of it.
That's part of it, yeah. Part two.
In precinct one and precinct four on Highway fifty-nine, Highway three fifty-one, and Highway two oh two in Beeville County.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Do we have the resolution prepared? Excellent. Hearing none, while we're passing that around, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen. In light of our effective use of time this morning, we'll pause for a moment so that we can all describe where John Hancock to the start is at. I'm very lucky I didn't just write Hancock as my last name. Moving on, agenda item number thirteen, Pettus Mud Generator Project Number Twenty dash zero six five dash zero one six dash T zero five six, plan approval and signature letter.
Judge, if you will, this is a formality in Pettus. Basically, what it says is, the court has looked at the plans, they don't have any problem with the plan, and I'll make a motion to authorize you to sign said letter and send them to keep this moving.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Thank you for continuing to spearhead this through to completion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you. Agenda item number fourteen, public power pool P three contract extension. Commissioner Duett?
Gentlemen, if you will, I'm your representative on the P three power board, and periodically it comes up for a renewal of our contract, that has come up. You have in your packet, and this is what they sent me. Basically, they're going out for business again, and the only thing we have to do, the way I understand it, if we decide we wanna go with more renewable energy, we have to do a resolution, and the price is gonna go up approximately ten percent. My recommendation to the court, we need to be cognizant of the fact that B County, even though it does have some renewable energy, we are pretty dependent upon fossil fuels here, and I would not recommend to the court that we break away from fossil fuels on this, that we continue the blend that we have, and it's my understanding, we don't have to do anything with this contract unless we're gonna change to more renewable energy. And I'll make a motion that we keep what we have, that if you allow me to send them an email to the fact that we had a Commissioners Court meeting today, I'll record the vote of the court, or if you need for the county judge to send them something, we'll be happy to do that, whatever it is, it's the simplest thing, but my recommendation is to continue what we're doing. And one thing we did, too, they sent a list of all the meters that are currently under their purview, and I know the auditor's office went and reviewed all those to be sure they were all correct, and I think they've done that, and I think the only thing we need to do is be sure that the new jail and S O was added, is that correct?
Was that the, I think that was the only addition that they found on it.
And basically, what it's doing, it's saving us three, it's saving us thirty to forty thousand dollars a year, from my understanding, for the last ten or fifteen years, it saved us three or four hundred thousand dollars by going to this contract. It's a public, public entity, they're not out to make money.
Thank you, Commissioner Duett. Does anybody have any additional discussion? Ms. Cantu, anything else that we need to consider? We do have a motion from Commissioner Duett. I'm sorry.
Second.
Yeah, we just need a second.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And court, if you will, what I will do, I will send them an email this afternoon or tonight with a copy of these Commissioners Court members, no reply necessary, that way I'll say that it was unanimous decision, and if they need more information, please let me know, and we'll go from there.
That sounds great, thank you, Commissioner Duett. All opposed? Hearing none, all those in, sorry, motion passes without exception, thank you. All right, agenda item number fifteen, resolution designating the B County Tax Assessor Collector as the Collector of Texas for the Beeville Independent School District.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda item number sixteen, appoint the B County Tax Assessor Collector to perform the tax rate calculations according to Texas Property Tax Code, section twenty-six point oh four C.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number seventeen, appointment of election judges and clerks for a one-year term beginning August one, twenty twenty. Ms. Mornecks, do you have anything to present on this?
No, I'm sorry, this is, this is my list at this time, who knows what it's gonna be in November, but we'll have to make emergency substitutions if something comes up with this list, but I've spoken with all of these, and they have indicated they will work.
Great.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second? I'm sorry, I kinda broke over, Commissioner Hager with a second, did you get it? No, no, that was me, not you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you to all of our volunteers, is it volunteer, or is it?
They get paid.
Okay, thanks to all of our paid.
But they're appreciated.
I do appreciate it, incredibly important. All right, moving on, agenda item number eighteen, Salary Committee Recommendations on Setting Aside the Two Thousand and Sixteen Salary Study, Adoption of a Step Pay Plan for Employees, and Indicated Adjustments to the Elected Officials' Positions. There's a lot in this agenda item. Ms. Mornecks?
Laura Mornecks, Chair of Salary Committee. Before I start on that, let me just add, you'll pick up, one of the commissioners asked me, tomorrow is Election Day for the Democrat primary runoff, so we'll be open seven to seven over at the office, please make sure you don't park with any kind of election signs in that distance, I won't have to have the commissioner move his trucks. So, that'll be it.
We won't say.
We all have trucks.
Yeah.
I don't have, but my clients don't stick to my car, so. We know who she's talking to.
We will have November coming up, I will say, at this point, we are going to be moving early voting for November out to the expo for the entire time, whatever that may be. At this time, we haven't heard from the governor how long he's going to extend early voting, but we will be moving to the expo, our entire office at that point, because we'll have to do everything out there, so we'll work on that. The last day to register to vote for the November election is October the fifth, October the fifth, so we want to pass that around. You can get applications off my website, either Paulus will mail them, they are posted to be mailed back, so you know someone that needs to register to vote. Okay, so we'll move into Salary Committee, I do have some corrections and some other items to hand to the commissioners, so if Commissioner, you might have to mention them.
These are individuals, they just, I'm sure, do you have them?
No, I think they're. Are they grouped up?
They're grouped, they're grouped.
Oh, gee.
They're grouped. That's the same thing I gave you earlier.
This page wasn't grouped up.
That page, yes.
This is all the, yeah, you got it?
I have one, I should have two.
Maybe one for Hope, probably, two for Hope.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Okay, so Salary Committee has been working extensively over the last year to look at the survey that was done, the salaries survey that was done four, five years ago, and the steps that we have been trying to make towards those. And we haven't, obviously, with all the things that's been on the county, we haven't been able to make a very good progression. We got past step one, and I think it kinda stalled out there, and then it was kinda put to the way aside, and different things happened. So in one of our meetings last year, we had talked about, we reviewed other counties that are in the area, and we had talked about the possibility of doing a step pay program, so that you don't have all of these salaries hitting at once and so forth. And it's been, basically, it's based on the time that you're in your position with the county, so that each year, or every year, every other year, you'd be getting a raise as long as you're in that position, and then the positions having classes as to where they could go. So the sample I sent with to put on the agenda, there were some things that needed to be tweaked in it, and some things like that, but I wanted to get it on the agenda, so I put what we had at the time. The one I just gave you, I believe, is, got all the little kinks worked out of it and so forth, so that's the thing that we're looking at. Basically, what, if you could look at that, it would start at, let me kinda give you an explanation of what's on, I'm gonna look at this, let me see if I have mine, it's just right here. When you are looking at the yellow pages, the first column gives you the department number, the second column is their nineteen twenty salary, the next column is what we currently call it, and then you'll see another column with different names on there. What we did to arrive at these salaries, sorry, what we did is, we went to the Texas State Auditor's Office out of Austin, and we pulled job descriptions and matched those to the positions that are. and we pulled job descriptions and matched those to the positions that are within the county as close as we could to arrive at, where should these salaries be standing? Then we looked at doing an adjustment for B County compared to Austin, so there was a little bit of adjustment coming down from that. So we just, that's the only reason those other names, we're not necessarily recommending these are the names they're changed to, we're just saying these are the job descriptions. And we were able to pull actual job descriptions from the auditor's office for every position that we have used and so forth. So that's kind of where we're looking at for that.
Let me interject, when Ms. Warnick started finding these, we had the salary study that was done before I got here, that I was handed, and the job descriptions there were pretty big, and we had department heads coming in and changing theirs. They weren't matching to what everybody was doing. These that Ms. Warnick found there are actually really good. I mean, they match, and they have clerk one, two, three, and four, five, and wherever that clerk happens to fall, I mean, with their experience and all, is a lot better than what we had before. So that's why we're looking at this. And, go ahead, Ms. Warnick.
Okay. So then, the next column is a class code based on the position. Your As are normally your paraprofessionals, those kind of things, and that's what I actually put on the different sheets for you, so that you can kind of see that came with that. Your paraprofessionals, your administrative support, that kind of stuff. Technical maintenance and stuff. Your Class Bs are your professional or your managerial position, normally. You have a lot of the legal, those kinds of positions in there. And then the last one, the Cs, and then I just made it a J just to make it easier for us to determine which were that. We can call them anything we want, these are just suggestions. The law enforcement and the jail position for that. So then, as you're going across, you see in the kind of orangey color, it's that, that would be like a minimum, higher end salary. Medium, about middle age, they should be working in that position, that's the salary they should be at. And then, of course, the top out at the maximum. In the red, in the actual, as you're going across the steps, the person that's in that position now, that's where their salary should be. They're based on the number of years in that position. Does that make sense? Question?
They may not necessarily be there, but that's where they should be.
That's where they should be. The salary that they were receiving in nineteen twenties is back over here. And then this last column, these last two columns.
I got you, I got you.
The last two columns, if it's in the blue, that shows how much they're underpaid, based on where they would be, or that's where they would be underpaid if they were, if we had this step system. And if they're in the red, it's over, based on the number of positions.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
I'm a clerk, I've got ten years' experience, and I leave. And I come back. Do I start on step one, or do I start with ten years' experience?
I think we would have to look at those. We've got some recommendations on that and so forth. I just kind of wanted to get this in place. If you'll look at the very back page, not the chart, the very last page, and it will point out some information to you. And I know we're going to have to probably go in more detail with you. The very last page, not where the chart is, but on the last of the spreadsheet, if you'll look, the total, if we were using this, the two hundred and twenty thousand, four forty-five, that is the amount that, according to what our current people and where they are, their salaries and stuff, that we were currently would be considered under. That's a hundred and thirty thousand, are pretty much below what the salary benchmark study, because it was three hundred and thirty something for it. So we're around that, so around that position. And if you'll notice, I broke it down for you into, like, the first column is people, there's twenty-two people that are less than a thousand dollars, where they would be on this step system, and that could be addressed with thirteen thousand, six forty-five total. Does that make sense?
Very good.
Okay, and then the other one's just your chart for Commissioner, for instance.
Very good. I'm a chart guy here. Chart is that.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay.
Very good.
Yeah, this is great data.
So all we need is like two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to fund.
Two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, you got it, man.
If we would have followed the salary study that we were doing before, it would have been about a hundred thousand, a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Four.
It'd get everybody there.
To try and, to try and combine all of this stuff.
This could work. I know it's not, it's not perfect, Commissioner Hagg, but it's got some tweaks to do, but it works.
We talked about, we talked about, after we had the commissioners' court look at this and deciding whether they would approve this or not, then going back to the department head, talking to them, showing them where we got these figures from, explaining to them. Because some of the departments, they want all their people to make the same thing. Well, you know, as you advance in the job, you should be moving up. And you've got somebody that's been here ten years, and you just hired somebody, they should not be making exactly the same thing, because the department doesn't have the knowledge on that. Part of what you were asking was, we were talking about, this would be, we would, once it was set in place, these are our classes, this is the salary range for those positions, et cetera, et cetera, then the department head would have the authority, if it was passed, that was part of the policy we were looking at putting in, is the department head would have the authority, if they hired someone with enough experience, they could go up one step without coming to commissioners' court. Above that, they would have to come to commissioners' court and get experience. That was going to be one of our recommendations. So that would address the issue where you have that. The other recommendation, now that we're so close to budget year, we're thinking that possibly we need to move forward with, if y'all approve this, go ahead and just put it in as it is, then over the next year, let the department head come and make adjustments for the following year. Because we're so close to trying to get everything into budget, I don't see how we would have time to meet with each one to make any adjustments.
Just a question. There's, in years past, a lot of times, what the court will do is do a percentage raise for everybody. This doesn't affect that possibility.
It, we would recommend, that is what has thrown everything out of whack, because if you have somebody that makes fifty thousand and they get a two percent raise, you have somebody that makes twenty, you're getting a further spread of where it would be. We would recommend any raises to be a flat amount across the board, in a dollar amount, not a percentage. Because that's what was going, all of, they, the county had a step program before it was removed, because it was not being followed. Those percentages were getting stunned, and that's what was causing it to go out of whack in the board. So that's what we were, we were looking at on there and stuff.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
With the state, TDCJ, one employee, if you, if you decide to leave, you know, just quit or whatever, you have the option of picking up your retirement that you built in, okay? Does that happen with the county? Do you have the option of taking out the retirement?
I'm sure you did.
Yes, sir.
Well, Mike, the reason I'm mentioning this is the policy about what happens if somebody leaves and then comes back. My proposal is, if they take out their retirement and they want to come back, they start from square one again, okay?
And now the.
People will do that. They'll quit so they can get the money, and then come back, and, you know, and then we're going to award them by, you're giving them additional time because they decided to come back when they took everything out of their retirement. That, to me, would make the difference. If they took, I, when I left the TDCJ, I left my retirement there. Thank God I did. Because come to find out, that their retirement system is almost tied in with the county, therefore, you know, those benefits, I got to.
You got to.
If I was still.
You got to invest it.
I bet that's it, definitely. So I think that should be a consideration for the court when we find with that decision. If the employee quits for whatever reason, and takes out his retirement, and then comes back, then he starts from square one.
And that'll be, has to be something we work with timing on and see if there's any restrictions and stuff. There's still some, some things that we need to work out on this. Right now, we're just kind of looking at this to get the, to understand that the salary study that was done and the benchmarks that were in place, we were not going, we were stacking on those. We weren't making any moves. Every time we'd make a recommendation, that recommendation would get cut out, and this, this, and this, that raises. We have on that, just so the court'll know, we have some employees that have had two, may, I don't think it's going to be three, but at least two raises off that salary step, and we have some that have had none. And so that was kind of why we were looking at that, you know, that that was not real.
Is there any way, any of this can be implemented in this budget?
Well, that's what we were trying.
At least, at least look at it, if we approve it today, it can be looked at.
Yeah, I don't know about the budget part of that, that'll be at the state school to look at, but I just wanted you to understand. The main thing I want you to understand is, on the date there, that is not a hire date. That is the date they went into that position. So in other words, if you have a clerk, and now they're moving up to lead, or they're moving up to chief deputy, you would go by that. And part of it would be that they would never, their salary would never reduce to what they're currently making. And so that, that was our intention all along.
Well, I know that we had a study before most of us saw on here. Then we had the one in two thousand sixteen, which was better than that one that we had before. This one was working, but it was slow in trying to get everything closed up. And so with Ms. Warnick going to the state, finding what her study showed, and got all of this that we're looking at, this shows us more of a progression, moving into the right direction, and a lot quicker. And it, the way this is set up, it helps the auditor figure out next year what to come to us with. Because there won't be everybody moves, but there'll be various movements within that step system.
And if you'll notice, on the salaries, those that are very large, those are the ones that are getting to that twenty-year mark, that are probably getting close to retirement. So when you start moving somebody up, that's going to drop back. So it's going to, it's going to be a slow change.
If the will of the commissioners' court is to move forward with this proposal or proposals that's based off of this, is it, is it the committee's thought process that this would be rolled out potentially over the course of one or more terms to move people that are underpaid?
Yes.
Up to?
You would have to, because I mean, otherwise you would not be able to.
It'd be quite a big hit.
Right, and that's what we would go back and study and say, okay, these are our recommendations to just leave. That's why I broke that down at the back, so you could see how many for this much dollars you could figure out this many employees, and now you only have this many left to do. And if you will notice, the elected officials are not on this, these are strictly employees. We have, we took that with the elected official lot, because it really didn't, on the salary, didn't have anything to do with that.
And although year over year salaries go up according to this study, if we were to consider implementing this, over a three-year period, we can do, we can still do most of the catch-up, say, provide a thirty-three percent per employee. If we're moving to a, if we're moving to a system like this, then every single employee within the county falls within one of the lines. And on the line, you have their, their pay scale. And then at the end, you have that they're under, like, take the first one on the, on the first page, they're under by a little less than four thousand. And the thought process is that, over the course of the next three years, thirty-three percent, or whatever.
Whatever the court does.
Whatever the will of the court is.
Whatever the budget would allow.
Yeah, to, to move them up, so that we wouldn't do an initial catch everybody up. We would slowly over time.
You could take that smaller bracket, and maybe catch those up, and then those will be done, and then move to the bigger ones and stuff. That's kind of how we did in the past on the, on the salary. I will tell you this, I did take the salary study that we had spent some money on, and this, I took those salaries, and I looked through, and that, that amount that there could be, the benchmark that was chosen, did fall within the range of every one of these. May not be in the exact spot, but it did fall within the range.
Any other questions?
If, okay.
On this part.
I'm hearing you say, Judge, you do a little at a time to catch up to those that are under right now, right?
That's how I was trying to, yeah, figure out, like, how does this actually get implemented?
Because what's going to happen is if we adopt this, if we do a little at a time, next year, everybody that was employed for five years now will be employed six years. So therefore, their salary here is going to change.
Change. But you'll also have probably some retirees, you'll have some, some people that leave, different things. I, I think it would be easier, this is my thought process, that is to take the group, the groups there, and say, okay, we can afford to spend fifty thousand this year on raises, and this is the group that we're going to affect. Then those groups are done, and then they just follow their path. You would also have to consider new hires, saying, okay, they're going to immediately come in on the step program.
And then we've got, we've got a part of you that are over, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't even touch those.
Until they start.
Not like every employee.
No, 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 no.
That are over already.
But it's better than.
And I'm not saying they're overpaid. We're not going to. Yeah, I'm not saying they're overpaid. I just think they.
Shoot the messenger. Base, base to where you land, that's where your salary should be.
And to me, this, to me, I did some reviews and stuff, and they, all the people in the business and the industry talk about step programs, at least it automatically gets employees' incentives to know. They're automatically going to get this much of a rate. They don't have any questions, they don't have any doubts. This is, as long as the court, the tax rate supports it, you're going to get this rate.
Now, this doesn't interfere with what we've set up with the jail? When they get certified, they get a certain pay, and all that sort of?
No.
No.
No. That's where the classifications come in. And we, we will still meet with each department and explain, and to show them where we got this from and so forth. So they can have a year or so to be saying, okay, I want to look at changing this classification, or this job title, or this, and then that has to come back. And that, if you can look at that, would help.
Because we might think you're a clerk two, and they're actually, the department head comes up, no, no, they're clerk three. This is what their functions are, this is what their duties are. So they have their recommendations.
Then we're going to have a look at these guidelines, these, these job descriptions, and face that.
And, and I would recommend that what we do is take these, and then for each of those positions, automatically get these in, and then the HR office can automatically have them. They know what those positions are going to be. We would rewrite these for B County.
You know, we've come so far, at one time, we could not get the department heads to even do a classification for their people. I don't think we still have them all, to be honest.
That amount on the, on the, on the salary, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight fifty-five.
For the old salary.
For the old salary. That's how much we would offer.
And you've got to understand, at that point, we were at a committee sitting there, we figured out who gets this, who gets that, moving this around, and huge amount, huge amount of paper going through to get, or we wanted to try, this is a much quicker, faster.
Or the department head would come in and say, well, that's not the job description that I am going to, it should be this, and they should get this.
Now, I guess the benchmarks were getting changed before anybody ever reached their threshold.
I mean, we were going to walk them past and try to say they're ready.
And we're not trying, we're not trying to take their, their positions out as far as classifying their people. We just give them some kind of guidelines to go by. This is what we expect. As a county, this is what you need to fill. This also helps HR, when they post that position, they now can say, these are your duties, this is what it costs, or this is what you're going to be paid. It's just a whole lot of that.
And it's encouraging employees to stay and move up in positions. You want them to advance, and then expand their knowledge, and that's, that's the ideal behind this.
Is there any discussion or further commentary with respect to the, the third component of the agenda item? The elected officials' positions?
I did bring, that was the other sheet, individual I gave you. It's a correction, I left one off, sorry, sir. But there's your correction on there, so. It's the individual.
Okay.
Thinking of the elected official, I'm not too concerned about ours at all. The one I am, and I've always mentioned this in the past, is the sheriffs. I honestly think the sheriffs are underpaid.
Yeah, that's.
If anything, and you're confused by the recommended increase, so I fully support that.
So that would be, that would, that was the sheet that was attached to the agenda item, was had that myself, so I brought it for us to sheet this one, so I want to make sure that's right.
What we will tell you is, the sheriff and the top three, the bottom three, were the, were the biggest discussions as far as just automatic, that's, that's automatic. There was no real discussion on that. The top one, we kind of played around with, and that's fine. But yes, the bottom three, and then the sheriff, that's a no-brainer. We need to, so the positions request that.
Does the group have a recommendation for the court?
Sorry?
Do we have a recommendation? I think we do.
That we move to implement this, and this step program, and abandon the previous salary study, and try to move forward as we can afford it. So that's the motion, is to abandon the salary study to adopt this step pay plan subject to further refinement, discussion, and implementation as far as how we're going to roll it out? Okay. And we have a motion and a second, any further? Any further discussion?
Oh, real quick, this is still fluid, commissioners. This is still something we're gonna be kicking around and, and suggestions coming back and forth. So, what you see is, is phase one.
Good job. But it gives us something better to work with than what we were handed up to say. The one that was ten before was just, I mean, I.
It was all over the place.
It was not user-friendly and it was hard.
But it was, it was good to start with, but it wasn't easy, right? It wasn't user-friendly. It was, we spent more time back and forth, kinda like, I know for you that coach, any kind of sports is for youth. You spend most of your time coaching and trying to figure out, and that's what that was. That was just, and it wasn't favoritism, it was just trying to make it fair and square for everybody. But I, I think this one's a lot better.
I, I tend to agree. I think it removes the arbitrary component, it adds an arbitrary component because the individuals are gonna be judged based on their experience. And on this, but as long as, oh, sorry. As long as our administrators, elected officials are, you know, monitoring their employees, then their employees should meet those benchmarks. And if they don't, then the employee would need to, need to find something else to do. Yes, Ms. Warnock?
That was, that was, of course, I just remembered you saying that. That was part of what we were gonna adjust in the policy, that it, the next step would, would be dependent on a favorable or positive evaluation.
That's great. I like that. So, that'd be the policy, that's the policy. That's a policy issue. A lot of art. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those unfavorables indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes without exception. Thank you, Ms. Warnock. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Salary Committee.
And then, and you can do the second portion on the elections, elected officials, or you guys care about that?
Um, I just wanted to remind now that she brought that up. We do have a ten thirty that we can discuss in the future as far as budget.
Yeah, and thank you, Ms. Cantu. And I, I think with respect to the elected officials, we'll, we'll touch base on that because it all gets rolled up into the same thing. I think that was the intent of your motion in a second.
It is.
Indicate that was their intent as well. Agenda item number nineteen, award request for proposals, RFP nineteen forward slash twenty dash zero zero five, voice over IP telephone system.
Moves approved.
Second.
Ms. Cantu?
Um, okay. So, first of all, me, my office was tasked with going out to look for, you know, to kind of put out our telephone system, our contract with our current provider, which is WazeSpeed, has been expired for a few, a couple of years. And so, we were looking at different options. We ended up going out for an RFP. This was me and my assistant, Veronica, that used an old RFP as the scope. We have limited knowledge of our telephone, how it's set up, what is needed. A couple of the other vendors that we had talked to during the process were not able to turn in a bid. We only got one bid, which is the one that you see here on the agenda.
You also got a no bid though, so that's a bid. You got a no bid.
It is. And what I wanna bring towards that is that that could be the scope that we submitted that might not have covered what it should have. And I wouldn't know that and my assistant wouldn't have known that. I did not have anybody look at it and I just wanted to let the court know that that is the situation that we were faced with. So, as far as what you see here, it's a thirteen thousand dollar increase. And I'm not sure if that's what we wanted to do. I'm not sure if that's what the court wanted to do when we were tasked with this months ago. This, we've been talking about since December, I'm thinking, maybe even November. So, this has been a long process, something that we just haven't had a lot of guidance on. So, I just wanna let, just remind the court of that and just let you know that that's what we've been faced with.
And our current vendor is?
Is WazeSpeed. Uh-huh, and we pay, we pay almost thirty-two thousand dollars annually currently. And like I said, this, this, this bid that was turned in is a thirteen thousand dollar increase.
The other bid was a no bid. Is there a reason to say no bid?
Just because of the portion in the scope that said about the numbers porting over. That was not included years ago when we initially adopted this voice, voice over IP system. There was no port over. And so, we added that because we, we thought that that's what everybody, what we had heard, everybody wanted to keep their numbers. So, we put that into the spec. That was one of the things we put in there was that it had to be port, those numbers had to be ported over. And what was the other one that we added?
The failover. The failover.
The failover.
Yes, where there's no disconnect. Like, there are some times where, you know, you're on your computer and the internet is interrupted for whatever reason. So, it interrupts the phone system. And so, with the failover, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be an issue.
Right, so that's the other thing that we added to the scope from years ago. That's the only thing that we adjusted, was the court numbers and the failover. So, when, you know, like, like.
And again, we didn't have any direction in the sense of, you know, the court's opinion on that. If porting a number isn't that important, then, you know, then we don't have to put that.
Should we have just a little bit of knowledge on this? Do we need to do a different argument?
Before we go into further, are you saying that if we didn't port the number over, we'd all get new phone numbers?
Just like that happened a few years ago.
I, I don't even know which ones he couldn't port over. I have no idea.
I, I read the stuff from Spectrum and it said, you know, we couldn't do this, 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 but I don't think we wanna change our phone number. I really don't. I mean, we went through that before and that's why we left the SO and the jail with their original phone numbers. It's, it's the confusion we got with the public because once we got away from AT&amp;T, our numbers weren't even listed in the books anymore. We don't wanna go through that again.
Exactly. Right.
It's not listed as the old numbers.
I, I do. Yes. I just wanna give the court full knowledge that if, you know, if we need to further discuss this and have it table or even reject, that that is an option. I just want everybody to know that, but it is your decision. I just wanna choose.
Is there any reason it was, it hasn't been updated in two years or it's just they haven't?
It just hasn't, hasn't been brought to the court. And like I said, it was something that was put on the auditor's office with our limited knowledge of the phone system or help with working this RFP up for the, the scope.
No, I know, it's probably extremely difficult because it's way out of your.
Right, it's, it's just out of.
Art, just if we have way to speak. Uh, before we let you speak, sir, Mr. Oliver, I know you're our, you're our IT head. Do you have any insights that you can provide to the court as our IT department in respect to this discussion?
Craig Oliver, IT Director. I was made aware of the RFP just like six weeks ago. There was a meeting that was called for me to attend, a conference call with Spectrum. That was the first I learned of it. As far as the numbers go, I'm not sure what their stance is on that. I know the numbers are portable. So, I mean, there, there wasn't any blockade there. In fact, the old numbers are portable now. Originally, seven years ago, when we went through this, AT&amp;T was blocking the porting process on that. But now they, they become portable over the years. That's not an issue. Other than that, I, I know over the last few years since contract, original contract was expired, there were three additional contracts sent to the previous judge on requests and there was no response on that. So, I don't know where those are or what happened to them. So.
Tell me this, do you, have you reviewed, did you review the RFP before it went out in your role as?
I had not reviewed the RFP. Like I said, I was only made aware of it when the RFP was published.
Do you have insight and ability to advise and assist the county with respect to preparing an RFP that, just from a experience or technical standpoint that April and her staff don't have? That would add value to our ability to.
I could, but you know, with the affidavit of transparency that I have with my private business filed with the county, it could be considered, if I had to recuse myself of that, it could be a conflict of interest.
Yeah, I, I don't know how you get around that. And my, my, I guess the point that I'm going to is, is with respect to the matter of course.
I think despite the technical.
You know, I, hold on one question. I don't know what the process is to address, Ms. Cantu, valid issues with how do we come up with a proposal that is accurately sets forth what our experience, what our requirements are? If she doesn't have any technical expertise and the individual that does have technical expertise has a self-notified and, and clear and understandable conflict because he's, you know, private business that he's affiliated with is the current contract holder and also a bidder on this, this existing RFP.
I would like to say, as, as the IT Director, I, I believe I am unbiased as possible. I'm just saying in public eyes, it could be used as conflict of interest.
Very much so. No, I appreciate that. No, yeah, we're just, it is, it is.
But as far as the technical aspects of it and everything like that, I would be happy to submit whatever is needed.
I really appreciate that. I know, Mr. Oliver, and we appreciate. What do you think? County has in place a, a conflict of interest or anything with your.
I had, I had originally signed an affidavit of transparency in the very beginning.
And we had the county attorney review it and we got a letter that said it.
Actually, the county attorney is the one that, he prepared it.
Yep.
Uh, I actually went over that with the county attorney at the time of preparation after speaking with him. And I actually signed it. It was then taken to the county clerk's office at the time, filed, there was a, there was a filing fee. I paid for the filing fee and it's been filed ever since.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah.
The affidavit was actually prepared by the county attorney.
Right. So, I, you know, the, the situation is what it is. It's one of the courts of living in a small rural community like ours. And, but, but to bring it back to the matter at hand, we do have potentially an issue that I think the court should consider. I know we have a motion in a second on the table, but we have some what I think are valid concerns that were expressed by Ms. Cantu, who is the person who actually put the RFP together. And I just think before we take a vote, I think we all ought to consider, is, is it sufficient? What we done, what we asked of the public or the vendors, the potential companies out there to bid, is, was our request sufficient? Or are we missing out on opportunity for cost savings or further technical development or anything that we need to take another shot at? And my, I'm sorry, my, the, the key and the kicker, the reason why I ask you, Mr. Oliver, to, to, to comment is that if the answer to that, the will of the court is yes, then the next question has to be how? And with Mr. Oliver's, you know, issue that he expressed eloquently and clearly enough for the court, who, who do we go to to get that information? Who do we go to to help us put together an RFP that, that is what we're asking? Because I think the RFP is a document that says, this is what we need. And if the person that's writing the document doesn't know how to communicate effectively what we need, that we're not asking for what we need. And we have, you know, a great, a great existing relationship with WazeSpeed and they know what we need because they're existing contractors. And so, they've been working with us and supplying with us. Hold on real quick, Mr. Oliver. What we don't know is, we don't know if Tom Warner knows what we need or whoever else might be interested in presenting the bid.
The thought that I had is why? Is there something wrong with what we're doing now? I mean, why? Why are we in the process of doing a, a sea change possibly?
Well, first of all, I think to answer part of that question is that it expired for one. The second part is some other company come back and say, Mr. Oliver's an employee of the county. And then therefore it's not there. We're bidding with a stacked deck.
Number one is cost savings. That's my number one. That, that's my number one. I wanna make sure that we're, that we're saving the monies that we should be saving or that we don't have what we should have or that, you know, whatever the case might be. But number one is cost savings to me above everything.
Well, I'm certain. But, you know, WazeSpeed's done, you know, I, I don't think we have complaints about.
They provided us with information that over the years, they've saved us almost half a million dollars by the, what they've done. I mean, I, it's a big fault, Judge, and I appreciate the situation, but let's don't change something just to change it if there's nothing wrong with it. Just on the aspect of, well, let's see if we can save money and maybe lose something that's working well. I, I don't know. I, I'm just.
I'm not saying we're gonna lose it. I'm just talking, I just want to be more sure-footed on, on where we stand on this. I think that's the issue. I think, I think the issue is that I think WazeSpeed's done a good job for the county. I think they're happy with the county.
Also, we, we tasked the auditors of it to do something that they haven't.
Right.
I mean, it's out of their, it's, it's out of their, their realm and their, their way anyway. So, we're, we're asking them to do something that, you know, all they have is old data that we've changed since then. And I, and I, and again, I, I agree with the judge. WazeSpeed's done an excellent job. And, but again, every once in a while, we just wanna go and look. I think we need to go and look and we may be, that may be the guys who are gonna stay with it. It's, we've done this before, sure, and it's, it's worked out in both ways. I agree, I mean, but I also understand the part of where we get our RFP. Completely agree.
Mr. Oliver, you wanted to.
Well, I'd like to comment that the RFP was actually fairly accurate. The only thing that they did add was porting and the redundancy. I also would comment on the additional cost that Cantu is talking about is, is due to the redundant aspects of the, the system that was proposed, is why there was a cost increase. It was not only for on-premise hardware and licensing for that. It was also due to each of the points that were due to failure was also including in the LTE backup system now. So, if there was the original part of it to die, it would continue to work, but it would be diminished, but it would still be operation. Now, the other aspect of.
Just real quick, let me stop. With respect to discussing the, the basis or the merits of WazeSpeed's proposal, I think that would be more proper coming from the WazeSpeed representative.
I, I understand, but this, this is just a technical aspect. The other aspect was.
Cost, excess cost is not a technical aspect.
Okay.
So, just.
But, but.
You're here, you're here, you're here. Thank you. Sorry. You're here as our IT Director. So, if, if, and I wanna hear from WazeSpeed and, and I want them to present the same information that you've got. So, if you think you're having to move heads.
Well, I was just wanting to talk on the technical aspect of one thing. And that was the redundancy, the other part of the redundancy aspect of it was if there was ever an issue that we lost connectivity, like the computer or something, you know, you would lose phone system. Even with the on-premise system, the way that the infrastructure is in the buildings where the computers connect, there's only one feed to each station. So, that's why it's DZ chain through the phone to the computer to save on infrastructure costs. If we were to lose a switch like we did a couple of weeks ago, you would still lose that inter-office connectivity with that type of outage. That's, it's, it's never going to be one hundred percent is what I'm trying to say.
That's the DZ chain that you just mentioned?
Well, the, the phone has two connections in it and each, each desk has a port where you connect to the network. And with previous systems or legacy, they were running on two wire, which is with the old standard phone system. This is actually what they call voice over IP, which is just same thing like a computer. So, it, it goes into one port of the phone and it comes out of the other port to the computer. So, if we lose the network connectivity like we did a couple of weeks ago where we had, you know, half of the courthouse down because that one switch, you would also lose voice capability at that time. And that's with any system, any IP system. So, I just wanted to make that clear. That part of the redundancy is never going to be one hundred percent fail-proof. I wish it could be, believe me. I wish there was multiple redundant systems that we could do to, to make that happen. But in an IP world, you can't do that, so.
But this doesn't solve that issue of if the computer system goes down, if a switch go, or port. So, but this doesn't solve that issue of if the computer system goes down, if a switch go- or port goes down, it's, then it kills not only the computers but the telephones.
Whatever's connected through that.
The telephones are from a telephone wire that's coming out of the computer.
Yes.
So this doesn't solve that issue?
It can't, it, it never will. So.
Yeah, I, you know.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yeah, if you wanna come up, Mr. Lockhart, you may. Thanks, Mr. Oliver.
Sure. Good afternoon, Court. Uh, Carlisle Lockhart, WaveSpeed. Um, is it okay for me to take this off and speak?
Yeah.
Um, so I understand the, the, um, concerns regarding the RFP. The RFP was a very, to me, with all of them that I've seen over the last 20 years, is pretty basic RFP. I mean, when you're looking at a phone system, those are very basic. Um, nothing crazy was asked out of this. Uh, we did ask, it was requested for redundancy, okay, like Fred was talking about from a technical point. Um, it's very difficult to get redundancy without a whole lot more cost. And I'm not even talking about the 13K increase. I'm talking about if you want your redundancy, you put in dual switches at every location, one for phone system and one for network. That takes care of that. The issue will be then if your internet goes out. With the on-prem solution that has been put in onto this RFP, you'll still have four-digit dialing. If somebody with a backup hits the fiber line or internet connection, you still have phone lines inside that you can at least talk to each other. Um, we're here to help with whatever we can, however we can. As y'all can tell, as Commissioner Dewitt noted on the back of, of this proposal, we have been here helping NV County with, with lots of different projects and save, trying to save the county as much money as we possibly can. Um, anything else that needs to be added or changed or, you know, reworked the RFP by any means, just let us know and we'll be more than happy to look at it.
I appreciate that.
But your, your best bet for redundancy for what the RFP was requesting is the on-prem. The fact that another provider said that they couldn't port numbers, that doesn't even fit into my mind right now. Uh, because you can port numbers left and right. Um, like I said, if there's anything else you need, please let us know and we'll be more than happy to help.
Thank you, sir. Did any other questions or any, any other discussion? We have a motion. We have a second on the floor to approve the WaveSpeed contract. I presume that subject is actual, making sure that the contract form itself, which I don't see on here, is acceptable to me. Uh, if y'all would so designate, um, if y'all want to proceed with that motion. I forgot who made the motion.
I'll amend the motion. If the motion be set up, that, uh, contract be reviewed by the county judge, be admitted to approval and, uh, define that motion if it's approved.
The amended motion, uh, don't.
Uh, I need to remove my second. I still have some questions.
I have a second.
Okay.
Having no second, motion dies on the floor. Is there anything further on this item? Any other motions?
I, I would like to make the motion that we redo the RFP with Craig's help. Hopefully, nothing will come back. Somebody will say, well, it was unfair because I'm competing against the guy who puts RFP together. But that takes it out of the RFP's office. They don't have the knowledge to put the RFP together. Or maybe it wasn't word correctly or something like that. But I'd like to see a different, you know, RFP out there to go back out there and look again. That's my motion.
Have a motion?
I'll take the second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll say, Craig, I don't, or Mr. Oliver, sorry. I don't have any, I don't have any question that you can, that you can separate the private business component to your, your obligations and duty with the county?
I, I would like to reiterate though, the current RFP as it is, I had no problems with that whatsoever. It was pretty basic. It was straightforward. The, the two additions that were put in there was not, uh, uncommon or, uh, out of the ordinary. Uh, I'm, I'm not real sure how much more we can revise it, but I'll do it in court X.
There must've been something different if, if the other company didn't wanna, if you're saying there's no problem with the porting, and the other company's saying that they can't do it, there's, there's gotta be a, a, some confusion someplace. That's, that's the doubt that I have.
That would be a state, they would have to present to the court what they pulled out.
They, you know, and if they don't wanna bid on it, well, just say, hey, we don't wanna take your business. At least we have a, it's clear. Right now, to me, it's not clear.
Let, let me ask a question. Who helped y'all put together what you have now?
It was from eight, uh, eight years ago when we initially procured WaveSpeed. Uh, it was that RFP, and like I said, just those two additions were added to it.
Where did the two additions come from?
Uh, there was a prior auditor. I have no idea where she got it.
Okay, this was at the direction of the previous county judge?
It wasn't all, I, I researched.
Some of it?
I did, yes. I absolutely, I absolutely researched. Um, I, I pulled an RFP from four, um, from the, from the internet, voice over IP, and I looked for the areas that, what we were requesting as far as the failover and matched it up to what was, what we already had. And so the only two adjustments I did make was the failover and the porting, and only the porting because that was communicated, you know, that's something that we kept hearing that. So that's, I mean, that could be one of the things that we could take off, off the table, off of the RFP.
This was at the direction of the previous county judge?
Oh, yes. Yes.
And from what I'm understanding, Mr. Oliver's saying he submitted three contracts and they were never acted on. Is that correct?
To, uh-huh, extensions to the other one are renewal, over renewed. And so, uh, the prior, uh, county judge tasked my office, and then of course, um, I've been, uh, working with Commissioner Falyis.
I don't think he ever said anything. I have. Right. I have.
Uh, on this.
Why are they undone?
Right. And also, we, we wanted to see if we could, you know, we, we could benefit from cost savings. Of course, that's always why we do an RFP to begin with, is to, to go and search for different options.
I, I just think that with this right now, the, the, the water's real muddy. It's not clear. I mean, I wouldn't make a, a, a vote and say, yes, I, I'm a hundred percent for it. I, I understand it. It's hard to understand yourself, Craig. But I understand it, or it's easier for me to understand, but, uh, it's unclear basically to me. That, that's, that's what I'm, I would like to see. Another RFP maybe go out, maybe with the differences or, you know, something to make it a little bit more clear. Or put it in language that we can understand, or the court can understand, or I can understand, basically.
You'll never make the word "I can understand" but, but he's, he's, he's real good in what he does and everything else. You can't dumb it down that low for me.
I, I try to do it in, in layman's terms as much as possible. There's just some parts of the engineering you just can't get around.
You do, you do great when you explain it to me personally, but then when you hit that one word, it's like, okay, we're, we're there. So, but no, uh, I have nothing against you or WaveSpeed. So, but I, I agree. We just need to, every once in a while, we just need to go out and look. But that's my, that's my, we just go out and look. It may not be anybody. We may get no bids, but that's fine. We just need to practice that most of the time.
Yes, sir. Would you tell me your name again? I'm sorry, sir.
Carlisle Lockhart.
Mr. Lockhart, thank you for being here this morning and present, uh, presenting to us. I know this is probably a little bit different than, than what you had expected, but we do appreciate your patience. Yes, sir, Mr. Oliver.
Can, can I make one more comment? This, this is actually on behalf of WaveSpeed though.
You can.
Over the last four years out of contract, there has not been any additional increases in charges other than the additional employees that may have come on board.
Yes.
To cover that user seat.
So we're gonna change it? They're not gonna be any more increased?
You're out of contract. I'm just, I'm just saying other companies would have, you know, tried to coerce you into a contract by increasing the cost.
And that's what we're looking at it. I mean, when, when we first got Miss Dono to do all the contracts and keep them in line to notify the court a couple of years ago, that's so we can keep up with what's going on. I mean, we don't wanna be working out of contract for two years or three years. I mean, that's not how we should do business here, Mike. Basically. So.
I, I just wanted to make that statement, make that.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further, or, there's no further discussion. I entertain a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, we, we need to go back to that agenda, Judge. We kind of called.
Oh, yeah, we're probably. Okay, Commissioner. Agenda Court's going to, uh, call Agenda Item Number 10. We'll go back there. Agenda Item Number 10, Public Hearing Pursuit Texas Transportation Code Chapter 253, entitled County Improvement of Subdivision Roads Burn in 2003 Regarding Placement Speed Limit Signs of 30 Miles per Hour on Debra Pettis Lane, Henry Lane, Kingray Lane, Benito Road, Salasada Road, and Garcia Road in B County, Texas, and Allocation of Costs Thereof, Colon, A, Subpart A. Public Hearing to Consider Placement of Speed Limit Signs of 30 Miles per Hour on Debra Pettis Lane, Henry Lane, Kingray Lane, Benito Road, Salasada Road, and Garcia Road in B County, Texas, 10:00 AM. Subpart B, Action on Allocations, Allocation of Funds and Costs Thereof.
Well, go ahead and go with the public hearing, Judge. Is there anybody there in the audience?
Thank you. Yeah, no, this is something I don't do a lot.
Yes.
We'll open the public hearing. No public comments. I entertain a motion to close public hearing.
No motion.
No motion in a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Okay, moving forward on Subpart B, Allocation, Action on Allocation of Funds and Costs Thereof.
I move that we approve the request for the statement time, and I believe Mr. Gonzalez, the road and bridge, would have the funds to put it in.
We have the funds, yes, sir.
Okay, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving back forward to Agenda Item Number 20, Award RFP 19 dash 20 dash 006 Trash Containers for the Road and Bridge Department. Mr. Gonzalez, you have the floor, sir.
Sir, Ray Gonzalez, Director. Uh, we have four bidders for our collection centers. Uh, Frontier by far, uh, was the lowest bidder. Therefore, I recommend that they get awarded it. I would like to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I will be abstaining from this due to a previous relationship with the, uh, uh, company that y'all are considering awarding on, but I think very highly of them, so I think y'all make a good decision. Should that be your rule? Go ahead.
Contract effective when?
September, I think.
Oh, no, you could still hear? Or?
No, this year. Am I right?
I believe so.
Yes, I think it's.
During discussions, we like to have, have something.
Yeah.
Yeah, just looking forward to it. Uh, looking forward to, uh, I know the sound that we're gonna be all here every day, but I'm looking forward to picking up y'all's garbage. We're looking forward to picking it up. We'll do a good job. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You've already checked it all out. It's all, uh, that's my head.
I didn't have my study. Frontier by far. Yes.
That's good, man. Excellent. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. Thank you, Frontier. Agenda Item Number 21, Award RFP 19 forward slash 20 dash 007 Paving Material for the Road and Bridge Department.
Vulcan got that bid. I don't think we had other bidders. We've had, uh, we've been bidding with Vulcan for the past 37 years. So I, um, we don't want to.
I'll second with a comment. Vulcan has in the past donated, correct?
Yes.
Has donated paving material for certain, uh, Titan Fire Department donated all the materials. Um, they donated all of the plates for us, for the county businesses. So, uh, they're, they're an excellent company. I know they're the only ones, but still, but still, they, uh, just about everybody uses.
Great. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda Item Number 22, Update Discussion and Possible Action Regarding B County COVID-19 Status, Preparedness, and Contingency Planning. Gentlemen, this is going to be on all of our regularly called agendas and special calls agendas from now on. Um, uh, just as a placekeeper, if nothing else, provide y'all with an opportunity to ask any questions. Mr. Willow is president. I'm president. Do you have any questions of us? Um, we can give you a general update on what's going on. Obviously, the situation is, uh, much more fluid than anybody uh, in, uh, government, in the county, in the state, in the nation, in the world, would care to, uh, to have to deal with. But that's just the situation that we're facing right now. Mr. Willow, give you the floor, sir.
Thank you. Um, at the present time, as of Saturday evening, because we didn't get no correspondence last night, B County has 122 COVID cases, of which 70 cases are still active based on the no longer under quarantine list. Since the 4th of July weekend, we have had an abundance of cases, over 40 or 50 cases. And they have yet to come off the list, the called the watch list. So that's what I'm basing those figures on. Um, we have at least 200 tests that does not have the results back yet. Uh, we talked to you before about the reagent from the current lab company we were using. They ran out of the chemical reagent, which helped them determine if the test is positive or negative. So the hospital, the COVID, uh, coalition, we all went and looked for another vendor, another lab, and Quest, uh, came off and said that they would help us with this issue. Now, we're learning that we were using, and we, you know, the, the people taking the samples, and our coalition accidentally used the old lab, uh, existent number. So it's putting, we have to go back and change everybody's code, whatever that code is, to make sure that we get the results back to us properly. So as of right now, we have got, we are waiting for 200 test results that we've done here locally. So that, um, I'm presently, uh, working with the accounting office, uh, the auditor's office, I'm sorry, for, uh, the, uh, RFQ, right? Is it RFQ?
RFP.
RFP. I'm using federal, the RFP for the, um, COVID-19 trailer. Um, it, uh, is over a certain amount of money, therefore it is required to do it. And since we are doing this for, under the FEMA guidelines, we're gonna have to do all the, dot the i's across the t's, so we're doing everything the way it needs to be done. I wish we had the vehicle. I wish we had the trailer now, but we have to do it right, or we could lose the opportunity.
Mr. Willow, we have discussed, uh, utilizing the CARES Act, uh, funds, uh, to provide you with a, a, emergency management employee that would be paid out of, of those funds. And I apologize, I just realized it's not on the agenda anywhere. Was that an oversight on my part, or is it something you're holding off on, correct?
No, we're not holding off on. Again, we gotta get our induction roll before we can, can pull the trigger. Jaime and I, Human Resource Manager and myself, we've been going over, can a full-time position under the CARES Act be allowed to contribute to the retirement fund? And as of right now, it says, yes, you can put into, uh, work with comp, and yes, you can put in for, uh, unemployment, but it does not mention that. So Jaime and I talked, and we're probably not going to see a full-time position because you can't guarantee it. And so what we are going to do, with the permission of the court and everything, when we get to it, is hire part-timers. Thirty, 30 hours a lap. Uh, we, we know the human resource has been with us, you know, every step of the way is showing what we need to do. Um, again, I am thinking, uh, a part-timer. Now, this is not including the one that, uh, that an auditor has been graciously allowing me to utilize, okay? So an extra one upstairs in my office, one for the, uh, tax office, for their, uh, screening station, and one for the corridor down here. That'll relieve all county employees to go back to work and have everything on, you know, pretty much, so they can actually do what they're supposed to do for the county. So at the present time. So at the present time, I think we're still not sure about the salary, but if we go back to what it's always been, I believe it's like $10 an hour, you know, so, but that is not finalized, that's not been, look, that's what we're, that's what I'm leaning to, if it's approved by the Commissioner's Court.
With respect to the COVID-19 hotline, over the last probably four weeks now, five weeks now, the call volume has increased dramatically. I do know that y'all are not able to catch every single call because of a lack of hands available to pick up receivers and take the calls. There, is there any recommendation or suggestion, anything that we need to look at with respect to asking other departments if they have available staff that can assist, or anything like that? How can we be more responsive to our community citizens that have this need now?
Well, one's that part-time employee that we're going to eventually, with the will of the court, I always got to put that with the will of the court, allow me to get, they will, one of their main duties will be the phone, you know?
Heading the phone.
Man, my goodness, I come in at 7:30 and my phone ringing specifically for that. Candy's been up there answering the phone. We could, you know, I even go up to people that, you know, talk to them on the phone, so that once you've done testing positive, if you want to come up and volunteer, come on, we can, you know, so we could use any volunteers we can get. It's, for example, today, I feel that 25 calls before Commissioner's Court, so.
If there's anybody in the community that is not a county employee that would be interested in volunteering their time, is that something that you would entertain, and if so, how would they go about expressing that interest?
I would have them give me a call, and then we would have them fill out a volunteer form, which is something that we use quite a bit with the command center operations. So we would, you know, since it's in a sensitive location, we'd have to definitely make sure that we'd have no conflict.
Does the, does the COVID hotline number, does it roll over to a messaging system, or does it just ring?
It just rings. In fact, I talked to Mr. Oliver today, because that is needed, and he says it's real simple, he just got to do a few things, so we're going to do that, because our call line doesn't open until 10 o'clock. Most people will call that line, then they'll turn around and call my line, you know, so we do what we can, and if there's any weak spot in the program, sir, that is it, is the call time. I hate to say it, but that's one of the weak areas of our program.
Well, let's definitely try to work with that a little bit. You are in pretty constant contact with the coalition members, the city, and the hospital employees, and our clinics. On behalf of Commissioner's Court, if you would please express each one of those every time that you speak with them, how grateful we are, and the community is for their continued persistent willingness to volunteer their time and effort to try to provide us some idea of where we stand with respect to COVID infection rates in B County. I can't imagine the Herculean effort waking up every day and dealing with that constant need for providing assistance to people as well as answering their questions when they are scared and angry and frustrated, and to you especially, thank you for continuing to guide that show.
I have a question. Mike, do you have people showing up there that haven't called, they just show up?
A few. A few.
How do you, tell me that issue.
We do it two ways, we give them the call line number and say, go ahead, and, you know, but if, if they look like they're confused and they really don't understand the process, we take their name and phone number, and we'll call them, and you go back to the office. And then I'm working on having the military come back down.
Great.
Ten inches, ten inches, that's for sure, date is 23rd, 24th. So we'll see about having them down here as well.
Any other questions, discussion, comment, anything at all from your commissioners?
Thank you for what you do, sir. Hope you're on well.
No action.
Thank you, Mr. Willow.
Laura has, Miss Wong again, to pull the help up from her office for some reason on election.
Elections aren't for months, except for the one that's going on right now. But aside from the one that's going on right now, nothing going on. Okay, if there's nothing further, we'll move on. I don't have any items under our executive session, so we're moving on to Agenda Item Number 23, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Aye, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception, thank you all, we stand adjourned of our first amendment. We're going to take a break for five minutes, we'll reconvene at 10:40, and we'll call our budget.